You can get ready.
I'll never be ready. Um, it's okay, it's just the link on the website is important for me. So, like all of our listeners out there, I want to make sure.
I thought you were.
Well, he and I can share.
Nope, I covered it there. There it is.
You're down there.
All right, man. Ready, Rock, Roll, It's.
We are so ready.
If I could have your attention, please. I'd like to call the reporter, the November 3th, New York City Council Special Meeting, 5:00 PM. And maybe we have a roll call, please.
Jonathan McKay. Michael Snar.
Here.
Bill Lierman. Bob Osborne.
Here.
Michael Albright.
Here.
Nick Eifler.
Here.
Matt Perkey.
Here.
We are missing one council member. What is your position? We're missing two council members. Oh, well, what's your pledge?
Would be excuse.
Second.
Motion second to excuse the missing council persons.
Who is second?
I heard it first.
It's Queen of Hearts.
See, on favor, second by mistake, I.
Aye.
And opposed. The missing council persons are excused. And you have the agenda before you for the budget work session. You need to have motion for.
Would be accepted for motion.
Second.
Motion and second by all right to accept the agenda as presented. That's all I have. We have before us, sorry. Oh, we could have a vote. All favors, second by mistake, I.
Aye.
And opposed. Just trying to move this thing along, guys.
Okay. I didn't have boxes to check.
All right, we're ready to move into the budget work session. Mayor, stand forth. Your own.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have it before you. We feel that this is a responsible budget. There has been some struggles. We've had to really work with chance to make this budget work. But we're optimistic that the budget from our drop in will match up. And we're here to answer any questions or questions.
Yeah, I will say that this was, there's a lot of, this is a lot of hours into this. It was a very collaborative effort. This was, this was a budget put together. We really equipped department heads to each department head. You, you put your budget together, you feel that you need, and then department heads then come to administration and say, this is what I need, this is why I need it. And then administration will work with the auditor's office to see if we can afford what they're asking for. And there was a lot of give and take in this budget. And you'll see that as you go through. I know it's a lot of information, but again, this is just a workshop, that's all we're here. But there was a lot of, there was a lot of give and take in this. And like the mayor said, I feel that this is a very, this is a responsible budget. It is, it is a budget that I believe preserves a healthy carryover. But it is, it is something that we spent a lot of time on with each department, department heads are here to answer questions. I have to give a ton of credit to Andrea. Andrea really is the, is the wizard boss on this thing. I mean, she really is. She, she, this is all her information that she's putting these numbers in, tweaking the numbers and working with the auditor. And so I think the, probably the best way to go through this would be for, you know, Andrea, if you wanted, if you wanted, like, start us out with, with each department and then department heads can jump in with the significant changes and kind of, if you want to steer the ship, that would be awesome. Because I'd be binged steering the ship, so.
It appears that maybe she wasn't.
No, she's.
But she's going to do.
So we'll, we'll hit some of the highlights and stuff. And if there's questions, again, this is fresh, this is new. This is, there's no reading on this tonight or anything, so digest it. Read, read. If you have questions or concerns about what we're presenting, please just reach out to us and ask those questions, and we'll do our best to answer all those things.
And we got, we want to do this special, we want to answer questions.
Absolutely.
Don't hesitate.
I need to get a copy so I'm on the same page. Okay, so basically, I'm thinking that you've all looked at this, so you understand that the first, you know, six pages of this incorporate the general fund. Your general fund total is midway through page six. Correct?
Yep.
You see that? So, the line of, the column that we're looking at tonight is the 2023 appropriations, your fifth column. And so you see the total general fund budget ask in this budget is $14,597.
Twenty forty.
Fourteen million, fourteen million. I have to practice my numbers. Fourteen million, five hundred ninety-seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars. A good number to compare that to is the third column, which is the revised appropriations number. That is the number, so we started out in the second column at that twelve million number, and then, as you know, we've been doing appropriations through the year. So currently, those revised appropriations are running a little bit over fifteen million. So the budget we're asking for is slightly under that right now, so fourteen million, five hundred ninety-seven. I think it would be best maybe just to start at the top. We'll do some of the administration first, like the auditor and the income tax law director, not the bulky administration part, if that's okay with you. And then we'll get into department heads, first the ones of the streets and the fire, the things that might draw off that general fund sum. And then we'll get into the enterprise funds. So, okay, so Mary Kay, would you like to talk about what you, the auditor's portion? Oh, and I did come out, these notes are things we were thinking about when we came up with the budget numbers, anything that we knew might not, like maybe it's a wish, but maybe we shouldn't just ask for it straight off the top, maybe we should wait and see how revenue comes in and see what we're looking at before we ask for certain things. So those notes are all in there. Any questions?
So to find the auditor's portion of this, the numbering, you know, the numbers down the left-hand side, start with 110 dot, and then have the three middle numbers, the three fight on page four. You'll see when you come down, and there's ones that go 110, 131, 131 is the auditor's. This is how we divide the departments within the general fund, so we keep the budget that way. The little accounting clue for when you look at these. We don't have a lot of changes. We do have a person who is retiring, so that's figured into some of the salaries. We've got some increased costs in our GAAP conversion, that's generally accepted accounting principles. That's what we do every year that creates our financial statements, and then that's what the state auditor audits. And we have a company that helps us make that conversion from cash to accrual. That's what that is. So there's some, there is an increased cost there. We do have a few increased cost rights stuff in CMI. Rights stuff is our timekeeping system. CMI is our financial system. And then I know that they would like for us to try to get some paperless stuff going here with scans and so forth. So there's not a lot to this budget, but I would welcome any questions.
What's the presumptive increase in benefits this year? I'm assuming it'll be the same across every budget.
I think everybody did a presumptive two percent as it was this year, not meaning that they, that's guaranteed, but that's up to you all. But we needed to plug, we felt we should plug something in for the budget process.
For salaries.
For salaries. Correct. Not necessarily for cost of living. I mean, or increase in cost of goods is what I mean. I don't think that is cost of living, cost of living to the city. I don't think we, anybody particularly, as far as my budget goes, there's no presumptive percentage increase.
How about benefits, insurance, any, I know we have, that's usually in April, I think, but.
Well, we're gonna have a big insurance conversation, so that's our benefits here when we get ready for the city council portion of this. We don't know because our insurance year runs April 1 to March 31st, and we never know those numbers. We will be coming back to this body in either the next meeting or the first meeting in December to maybe do a few little transfers, because we know darn well, we try to use the same insurance benefit numbers as we know they are today. That's the best we can do for budget purposes. I hate to throw in a 25% increase or something, and we hope we never have to see that sort of thing, but we will always come back to you at the end of the year when we say, yes, we, that went up in April, we didn't know what it was going to be, it might be two percent, it might be one percent, it might be five. We have, we have no idea, so we always want to be very transparent with you about, that's the way we like to do the benefit insurance, because it is an unknown as of this date. Working in April has worked really well. We get really good pricing for insurance by having that off calendar year to bid out insurance, health insurance, because everybody's doing it on December 31st. Everybody is pushing those brokers, and we feel like we perhaps get, we have historically gotten better rates with insurance. But we're gonna have a deeper dive into insurance conversation here in just a little bit.
Is that gonna include property casualty insurance too? Because that looks like a thing to go along with.
No, property, property and casualty, I think we've directed people to stay within what we had in this calendar year, because we have no reason to think that that's going to have any big fun. We're in the pool, once again, we're in the pool within the Verma, which we started when you were here, Nick. So, and it too has been, has done well for us. We have, I don't think that we have any complaints with high end value risk management, so. Good question, thank you.
What's the system update?
System updates, those would be, let me look here, see what she said. We're gonna implement some paperless capacity in the finance system, so we can maybe reduce some of our paper, so that's been a key, an update to that system altogether, the finance system, the CMI system, to update it, to be able to scan things in. Maybe we'll do it, maybe we won't. This is our, this is our intent, because it's a good thing to do that, but, you know, we want to make sure it's exactly right before we jump in. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
If you're gonna go to income tax, I'll tell you that they're right below us. He says I should always be on top, so I just wanted to say.
Absolutely, as she said, they're right below her.
Not below me, below me, but behind me.
So Paul and Mark, if you would like to discuss anything about the budget?
Well, a lot of ours is a boil play, because, but there is one big change that may have me to swear of, was our CMI maintenance software maintenance agreement. Some re-invested bills for like a year and a half, then we had to come back to council and get more money. So now we put it into, when you see data processing, users only 2,000, and I was like, 12,000 is very expensive, but we got three different systems that rolled on with that. Otherwise, our biggest expense is tax returns, mail and envelopes, anything that we get to help the taxpayer, file the tax return. Anything else, like Mary Kay, you know, I like to go shopping for supplies, and we don't want out, so. But that's, that's really hard for us.
Okay, so next on our list is human resources. We did something slightly different this year with human resources in that we pulled out those budget lines. So when you look at the 134s, which are on page, well, they start on page five top, human resources salaries used to be in administrative salaries, we just pulled that out, just for clarity. So, Mr. Reynolds?
I got nothing. The, it's fairly simple, I am a, I'm a tracker, I like to know where each dollar goes. So we have our own internal budget that we're gonna blow up this, so we even have more delineation of where we're going, but we tried to put in some money to, for recognition of staff, trying to build that up to increase retention. But really, there's not a lot of, not a lot of mystery in this, and I'm happy to address any questions. The one change was, is what, is what Andrea already mentioned about the blowout for salaries, but really, other than that, there's not a whole lot there, different from what you've seen before.
Does the contract, the contractual services, that included in that as well?
Yeah, and that's something we were gonna talk about, but we're looking at some of those.
Health insurance.
Gotcha.
Is, is human resources, I think it professional services?
I'm sorry?
What is human resources professional services?
That could be if we're using third-party counsel for something, if we're using a third-party advisor for stuff that we can't do internally. Anything else? Thank you.
The, the next is municipal court. Sarah AD was not a municipal county. They're.
Sarah worked with Danielle and.
Like Brian said, in the public sector.
Brian Kratz served. It's sort of.
We all got it.
It is what?
Well, I knew there were some, you know, temporary judges in place, I didn't know if they were.
She's done this for, she's been there for thirty-plus years, so it's not like this is an unusual thing. She worked very closely with every judge that she's had, so.
Right.
So, it's, you know, it's, it's not foreign to her, so it's not, it's just uncomfortable because she's had to do it without a judge working like their with her, but otherwise, I think she pretty much knows exactly what she's doing.
Yeah, she said her only regret is that Mike wasn't here to present the budget, so. Next, we have law director.
I think you can see the only real change is obviously the salary line and then the incidentals, which obviously is consistent with what's going on. I would figure, you know, seven or eight percent increase, I got, you know, based on inflationary pressure. There was an increase in publications, that's from a less law increase based on our subscription, which is necessary to utilize to make sure that we're compliant with the current law.
He's on page six, he's the 181.
And there are any other questions, but that's, those are the changes. Minor inflationary ones, but probably, you know, secondarily, inflationary, less law. But everything else is the same.
So next, we're gonna, there's, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have any questions?
I can tell Jake we passed.
All right, so we're skipping across like some of the funds that are, they just are what they are, like the Corona and the American Recovery Plan Act, it's whatever money is left is what will be there. Next, we're gonna go to the 200s, so that would be maintenance and repair, Mr. Ron.
I really haven't changed the whole law, you can see on there, we actually lost some money, our salt prices went down, capital equipment we backed off of, big increase I got in the salaries and the benefits.
And the roof.
Yeah, we picked up a home building down there.
Right. Two hundred thousand dollars in a roof as part of the, the changes that we're making to the way.
We backed that out there.
The roof, the roof stays.
Same, okay.
We, we had some capital equipment that we backed out. Would you like to talk about what you were, like what you're thinking that you need and?
We have to go and replace three trucks next year. What we want to do, we're taking out twenty-year-old equipment, what we're doing. The one truck on there, it'll be a little more than the other two, but it's also a multi-purpose vehicle, little, it has what they call a hook lift, you can change the bed out on it, you can put a flat bed on it, you can put a dump bed on it, a leak box, so there'll be a cost savings in the long run.
How much you think about for the three trucks, Jerry?
It's gonna be about 250.
We'll just appropriate those as we get them ready.
Do you have, you've talked to suppliers, do you know if any of them would be able to be delivered next year, or are they still, they're all things that we can, that we're able to get?
Next year.
Great.
That's what they're telling me.
Just so you know, like appropriated was 268, and the capital for that line, you see that so far spent was 65. We just ordered a truck.
Right.
That we don't expect to get until the third quarter of next year, right?
That's what we're telling them, third quarter of next year. We're building a year out.
That year-to-date expense will change here very soon.
Yeah, that's, that was $194,000.
Yeah.
For a dump truck with all its new equipment, everything.
It looks to like, if your salary items up about 12%, just, some of that I'm sure is the raises in the.
Right, and then we had some employees move from, been reclassified, they got moved up from a maintenance one to maintenance two, and from a laborer to a maintenance one.
I think we're gonna see this throughout the year. The way of things, that's, we knew that was coming. One question I might have just said was a decrease in the salt.
Yeah.
Are we still under, Brian, I know we had entered into our, so it's, we're still on that pricing for now?
It's the state contract, yes.
Yes.
So we'll go back to it.
And I'm sure that can change based on what kind of weather we have.
Well, we're locked in on that price, so.
Right, that probably walked in for 23.
Well, I just mean pounds, tons, you know, however much we use based on.
We're locked in on that too, on how much we're about to add. No, we're all right, we're good.
Okay.
We got three thousand tons in the building. We got 113, 120 tons.
Definitely consult your price.
And that, because we built that salt in.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's probably that, we're, we're in good shape.
That's good. You, you know how quickly that can go sideways? I'm just, just not nice.
I lost many nights of sleep over that.
Supplies, gravel, stuff like that, is that what that is?
Supplies, yeah, that's what AED, so we have a defibrillator there at the shop, we have a fire station, emergency fire station that they maintain, and we'll get, there's other things we can get out of that, that's gravel, the stuff for our, our passer that we use on the streets, material for that.
Our mechanic uses a lot of that money too, right, for supplies? Our mechanic uses a lot.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we get a lot of vehicle supplies out of that lawn, too.
Rick and Jerry are sharing the cost of roofs, you'll see, you'll see that.
They've got a lot of posting that's going, we've got a lot to circle back to.
What's that?
So we've got a lot of posting that's going, a lot to circle back to. Roots and insurance.
I'm curious about, I used to sell ribs. What kind of rib is it?
It's on the big building, yes, we've been only touched yet till now, so it's on the building, shared by everyone and the crew. And most of it's the original roof among the building, so.
Yeah, we shared the building.
It's made of Chris's posts. It's been around a good while. Those just, those, we checked them, that's why we decided to build the roof. Because the structures, actually, pretty easy, that we didn't get a roof on, what happened, was the sky lights, and you can't mess up metal pattern anymore. And plus the shop, you know, if you lose the roof, you've lost it, you've lost the building.
Okay, moving on, next is transit. Do you have an update?
Yeah, Jess isn't training, and she's stuck in chill coffee, so we can cover it together.
Okay, you want to start?
Sure. The, I think it's your, I do all the, oh, hey, Jane, I'm sorry.
Yes, we're into.
From the beginning appropriation in '22 to what we're asking for '23 on the salary line, you can see that there is a, a pretty significant increase, that, that is due to the increase in the salary for the drivers. Also, the, you know, the exposition, I'm, was Jess's position? Was it? Thank you. So that's, that's the increase there. Also, I remember last year when we were doing the budget, I, I think this is a much more accurate budget than it was last year, much more accurate. So you see these increases in the transit department, and you see that there is a, a need for a transfer from the general fund, but I also believe that this is a much more accurate budget that we've had for transit than I've seen in several, several years. It reflects what's actually happening. The other thing that's kind of tricky with transit, you know, every dollar that you put in, you get fifty, you get fifty cents back. So it's like, if you, if you're matching more money, you're gonna get more money back. So you see these numbers, but it doesn't take any consideration of revenue, I don't know if I, if revenue is the right word, but the way you get reimbursed from the federal government and state government in these line items. So go on through, like I said, the salary is, I mean, it is a, it's a service-based department, and so that's where, that's where the chunk of it is. We are going to implement a new dispatch system. If you see under the 5234, it's a new dispatch system, you'll see an increase where it goes up. That is a, there's a large one-time cost for that, and there's a monthly fee for the new dispatch system, but we are, we are going to get off of the pencil and paper and, and get to modern dispatch. And I think that will, in the, in the long run, I think that will also, not only will it be much more efficient, I think we'll save costs in other areas as well, I think we'll save cost of fuel, I think we'll save, obviously, employee time, customer wait time with this system. So that is something that we're definitely going to implement this year.
Right, is there any other cost in that line, or is that the one-time cost, the $22,000 over the 59, 400?
I believe that's everything. I think, I believe that's just.
So there's nothing else being?
No, I don't worry so. I, I can't do the math right now, but I'm pretty sure the 81 is the 59 plus the 49, 50 a month.
Coming up, I'll back up just a little bit, and we talked about benefit insurance, and I know we're gonna talk some more about it, this one dropped. Nobody knew what they were doing last year in this budget. That's the bottom line. I, I can't say it any plainer than that.
I was gonna say.
Brian's being.
I was gonna say.
Please, please, let it go through, Rick. I'm just gonna tell you. I won't even tell you what I wanna say. It wasn't done right. It was, it was just completely, there were a lot of factors, maybe a little anger, a little, I don't know what, in putting this together. So you really can't make a good comparison. I, I hate that, I hate to say that to you all, so that, because it doesn't really give you a good picture. But look at what's being spent year-to-date more especially, as you look at what the requests are, rather than what they asked for last year in this one. Uh, that's, that's my opinion, my best defense.
Can this one be transit or benefit insurance?
Transit.
Transit.
But benefit insurance in that line was just, I don't think anybody had a clue what they were doing with that request. And so that's why it wouldn't have come down.
And what we asked everyone to do this year was to take how much they spend every month. So we gave them, this is how much you're spending through the end of August. We asked them to divide that by eight, multiply it by twelve, add five percent. There's a number. There's like a, a probably a real number or close to real. So a responsible number.
There's a lot of that simple average thing that goes a long way in figuring out what you're gonna do for next year. Because we don't, as soon as you pass this, it's gonna change. So we all know that happens. So this is, this is our, this is our best way to do this sort of thing without just throwing the door.
Are we anticipating new dispatch system generating more number of rides, higher number of rides or more efficient?
More efficient.
Or sure. I'm, what I'm, where I'm gonna go to is the fuel line. I know it fuels up, but fuel's been up for nine months.
Right.
You know, so seeing a pretty substantial jump in, i- if we're going more efficient with the new system, anticipating less rides and more efficient operation of them fuels up a lot. So is there a philosophy throughout the budget for fuel? Cause we do have several different departments, it's kind of just a blanket increase or?
It varied, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say it varied by department. We did not give them an algorithm.
Okay.
We, we just had them kind of figure out what they, and and Jess's, Jessica's budget was larger than this and.
That's, that's what I was looking at.
We worked with her, but we asked her to trim it down because she, she presents her budget to ODOT in May. That's when she has to put her budget together. And so she had that kind of information and then she handed that to us because it has to match exactly. And we're like, you can't, you can't do that. And so, so she's gonna work with ODOT to explain, you know, how we've changed it a little bit. And so we're all, we're all working together to get through it.
Okay.
I'm a little confused by the facilities maintenance, the maintenance services. OT, OPT two, building improvements project expense. And I'm, I don't know what all those things are, where they, what, do they overlap? I'm not, I'm not sure understanding all that. In other words, LED lights and maintenance services. They're not part of facilities maintenance, but facilities maintenance went up. I, I, I don't understand facilities maintenance at all.
I think she has a lot of grants that fund things and she has to split them out and show them separately. So even though they might, to us, it's all like facilities maintenance. If they're different grant projects, then she has to put those all in different lines and it's really confusing.
That, that is a belated point today. Maybe we can get some information on that between now.
Yeah. There's a lot of maintenance. She is, and there's a lot of deferred maintenance at the, at the building itself. The, the doors need replaced and the walls.
We just had one fall for it.
We did. And, you know, there's a lot of deferred maintenance and I think that's where she's trying to pull from different lines because of the reimbursement. Three grand dollars is a big thing. There is a note here up in the other materials and supplies, non-add-in. That used to be a line where they basically spend everything out of. And it's another, going back to the auditor's comment, you know, prior to twenty-two, that budget line was a hundred and fifty thousand. And for whatever reason, they got cut to five thousand last year. So we're trying to right-size it now. So that's why you're seeing from five thousand to sixty thousand. That's where they do the bulk of their spending for the day-to-day supplies and materials to, to run the, run the organization. Yeah, and we, I, I don't know why it went from a hundred and fifty to five, but it did until we're trying to right-size that to sixty.
The OPT two project?
Oh, that's the grant, yeah.
That's the grant. And it's not gonna be finished this year. So, so this is what's remaining in that and it's reimbursable. So this is, so this is, that's the amount that still has to be done next year and it'll be reimbursed. And you'll see in your transfers tonight where I'm taking money out of this line in this coming year, but we're not gonna use it. And moving it into a salary line just to, within that, within the budget, the twenty-two budget, when we aren't gonna use that line any longer. And the money will be coming from not the state, but from the general fund. And we'll talk about that later transfers. But that's, that's that grant program and that's that for the year.
But yeah, any other questions? I mean, she'll be back and she, she'll be happy answering any questions you have left for budget. So I think that's it for the transit.
And, and the reserve fund, that is the one right just immediately below that. This is something that started during COVID when they wanted us to, to put things in one place and another. We got guidance in, in different directions and told to do, do things differently. Right now, we're doing what they consider being a reserve fund, co-mingled with her regular budget. We recognize how they want those revenues tracked and expensed and tracked within her current budget in twenty-two. But in twenty-three, what we get to do is contract dollars that we receive get to go into this reserve fund. And then she has certain guidelines on how that reserve can be spent. So it has nothing there, so we'll be back. We'll be back next year when we start to fund that and start to really get those dollars in there and doing it the way they tell us today. February, they might tell us something different, but this is where we're going with it today, but there's nothing budgetary for right now.
Brian, is there any additional, I know that mobility manager started as like grant-supported project. Is there still any additional grants support for that?
Nothing I'm aware of. I don't know. I can find out.
I know there was initial, was it three years was the initial? And I knew when we integrated, I didn't have the hostility, did you have a meeting?
I'm not sure, I can find out.
You said she'll be back. Do you mean tonight or keep me out?
I don't know if she's gonna be back, so I'm hopeful. She's in show. I'll get it, I'll get it that day with a break.
So maybe during the regular meetings.
We're gonna do this again, so.
Yeah, you are.
It's not like, it's not like.
So that might work for her.
Yeah.
They used to.
Exactly.
I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll.
Have an accident.
Yeah, we, we need her.
You feel okay about transit? Uh, let's move on to skip all that court stuff and then go straight into police.
I will have an update on maybe who's driving when we go on the regular council.
Okay.
That's on the air side, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. So we're going to go to page. Oh, on yours, sorry, near the five tent, right?
Yeah.
Do you find them?
Page one.
Well.
Wait.
Well, yeah.
As you notice, salaries, we just put in a two percent cola. It is controlled contract year, so it could go anywhere from two to up at four and a half percent. We don't know where they have to. So I just put in a basic two percent in there. Really the changes, you're gonna see, I did add some things in here. Uh, one of them is, we're looking at line item fifty-two thirty-seven under data processing services. I put in about an extra three thousand dollars there. The reason being is we have to upgrade our CAD RMS system. Uh, we have the CAD RMS system currently for the past three years is not very user-friendly. Uh, our dispatchers are complaining about it. Our officers are complaining about it. I would complain all the time. CAD is a computer automated dispatch. RMS is report management system. The problem I have on our current RMS system is I cannot pull up any analytics. Similar to, I know the mayor asked about three weeks ago, pull up crime statistics. In our old system that we had in ninety-seven to, for years ago, I can pull up graph charts, whatever I needed for any type of crime that we had. When I contacted our engineers from ID Networks, who's our vendor for the system, they said, well, you don't have a module for that. So I had to go to the FBI statistics and pull those numbers from it, so.
I remember three years ago when we wrapped this in, we were discussing how great of an idea it would be to.
The, the current CAD system?
And we did talk about, we were using an old, you know, twenty-year-old system and.
The old system was better than what we have now, I would tell you that.
A module, we didn't monitor what it still has. Why the hell do they not have that, why do they not have that module?
I have been looking, I'm looking at grants. Right, I understand. And I, I'm frustrated as much as you are on this. But I'm looking at grants to see if we can get something over a ten-year period, hopefully, uh, to be able to upgrade our CAD RMS system. Of course, uh, you know, with RFPs and things like that, it could take eighteen months to two years to get something in here. But we're gonna have to, we're gonna keep it in-house. There's possi- possibility we'll have to upgrade servers. Servers aren't cheap. We're talking about eighteen thousand dollars per server if we need to do that. So that's the reason why that's increased a little bit there. The equipment maintenance, as you notice, we had three thousand dollars this year. We spent all that and I increased the two thousand dollars, the, the increase in costs for, for equipment maintenance. Radio maintenance, um, that one there, I kept it at three thousand dollars. I will tell you, this year we are going to be doing the county commissioners pay to the entire county to have an upgrade to our radio systems. Doesn't cost us anything. County commission's been paying for that. After next year, we will be responsible for any maintenance on our radio. I will tell you, it will be three hundred to five hundred dollars per radio anytime we send it in for maintenance. Just the service costs what they do. So next year, twenty twenty-four, we'll probably see a huge increase in that lineup. Vehicle maintenance, I increased that by five thousand dollars due to parts and labor increase. It's hard to find parts. I mean, we, we waited almost three months to get brakes for one of our bus drivers. So we couldn't even drive it because they hadn't brakes available, which is unfortunate. Priority casual insurance, that, there's increase in fees, that, that went up about seven hundred dollars. Uh, the K nine program, I want to implement that, re-implement that. I'm hoping to, I wanna get our staffing up to the levels where I can do the specialty units, particularly the, the K nine. And I wanna bring back the bike control. But once again, let's get up to full staff before we do that. But I'm looking probably July one, maybe of re-implementing that K nine program. Hopefully, we need another grant through the Haverkamp Foundation to provide our last K nine that we had. The cost would be outfitting the vehicle that we would currently have in our fleet.
How many officers do we need to pick them up to?
I think the city board says we have, we can get twenty-eight full staff. I think we are currently at twenty-five, so we need three more.
Is that reflected in our salary line that grew up there?
I believe it is, yes.
The intention to be full, yeah?
Yes.
Dispatch salaries. It's less than, it's less than half of what we appropriated last year so far. Let's, we'll elaborate on that a little bit.
The dispatch salaries?
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's gonna go up because we did, we did actually hire two more dispatchers within the past three weeks. So that went up. We actually are still too short. Uh, we're, I think we were promised the eight.
Turnover.
It is just turnover.
Turnover.
That's the problem. We, you know, we're supposed to have eight, we were down to four. I know, uh, they helped us considerably, give a test almost weekly, social service test. We are up to six, we have two in training, training is twelve weeks long. So until we can get those, those fully trained, then we can reach out and hire two more after that. So there is an increase in that line either for those dispatchers. Uniforms, that went up five thousand dollars, that's the outfit for the initial officers. That would be the, of course, the regular uniform, gun belts. We do date the firearms, I, I increased the firearms as well because we would have to purchase extra firearms on for these officers. So that, that would be the increase in cost of outfit for the initial officers. You'll see the increase in the firearms ammo, that's the reason why. The equipment, line item fifty-three forty-five. I know last year we had ten thousand dollars and I upped it to thirty-two. Now, if you look at what I'm going there, once again, these are items I'm looking at for grants in case I can't get grants. I do wanna get three radar units for all of our crews. Currently, we have one or two. Uh, I think one is down right now because of the, there's some electrical issues with it. Uh, usually a radar unit can run anywhere from thirteen hundred dollars to twenty-eight hundred dollars, just depending on the manufacturer. And I think with the current state of complaints that we're receiving for speeding in the city, it would benefit us as a police agency and the city to give the officers the tools that they need. And let's, you know, and if that means I have to buy a radar unit for each vehicle, I want that. Because it just increases our public safety benefits for our citizens. So we might wanna cut down on complaints of speed. Uh, if we have to do it as a anonymous campaign, we will do that. I don't have a problem with that, so.
How many of the mobile speed units do you have that you set out and they record the speed?
The signs?
Yes.
I think we have two, don't we, Jerry? Two, two total. Yeah, I think there's one right now on Midwest Bay Street, just down from the hospital. Three total? I mean, th- those are great, don't get me wrong, but they don't write tickets. We're, we're on the same thing, Brian. They don't write tickets. Uh, and one of the things, you know, I, I will talk to you guys about, and, and Brian is, I just recently, recently went to a trip in Pennsylvania and they have road signs that say speeding enforcement zero tolerance. I know we have opportunities to make signs down at the service department. So that's something that we can implement here, I think we should. And we can direct the officers to zero tolerance, makes that zero tolerance. Something to look at down the road. Also with that equipment, I talked about the radar units. I wanna implement a drone program as well. A drone program can be anywhere from four thousand to ten thousand dollars, depending on what type of drone we have. I would like to get two. One for everyday patrol operations. That would assist, I know just over springtime, we had a little autistic kid left East End Elementary. If we were to have that in the back of one of our cruisers and got it up immediately, we could have used it as a resource at that point in time. The other one would be a SWAT operating drone for SWAT operations to be able to watch the perimeter. And, you know, if we have felony suspects, we are able to locate them sooner with a drone than we would with a humanized cyborg K nine O's. So it'll just be a benefit to the agency overall.
Officer safety as well.
Yeah.
I thought we already had it.
We do not have a drone.
We discussed implementing that program and that was part of the discussion of, you know, integrating all the new cameras at the parks and things. Adding the drone program will be able to.
What we do have, we do have a robot on the SWAT, it's called Frobot. And what that is, it's like almost like a ball that you throw in, it's got cameras in it and then it has tracks. It will actually go upstairs and things like that. We do have one of those.
So I, I was told when we were talking about the, he's spending the trail out to Oregon, everywhere, well.
I would talk to. But yeah, I, like I said, drone, you just look at the benefits.
To patrol, to patrol the bike track.
And I talked to the senior chief just this weekend, he actually has six, uh, just for his patrol units. And he says that they're really beneficial, cost effective as well. Once again, I'll look at the grants for those. I can't get the grants, that's why I ran out of, they're at least five, about twenty thousand dollars. Other than that, you gentlemen have any questions? Tech equipment?
The line right below that.
That is, uh, that would be stuff like updating our mobile computers. Uh, that would be printers that we need and any bars as well. That would be cartridges that we need for. Um, that would be cartridges that we need for printers that are inside the, uh, department downstairs.
Chief, uh, the drone, uh, what type are we gonna get?
I'm looking for something that has, of course, cameras on it and something with FLIR. Uh, FLIR being the, uh, have night vision and also the heat signatures as well.
The one problem I can foresee, it's not really a problem, is the, because of the airport, most.
I, I understand that, because we are in a regulated area because of airspace.
It's a bubble.
We would have to, uh, we would have to contact FAA and we'd have to request, anytime we would set it up, we would have to request an emergency. Uh, there is sort of one, yes. It, it's unfortunate, um, because I know there's been several people, uh, that have businesses in town that wanted to, you know, bring, bring a drone in and do, uh, commercials and things like that in the businesses and they were told no by the FAA. But because of us being a, uh, public safety, all we would have to do is make, make that emergency phone call and get approval to do so.
There's also that clearance, but there's also an actual bubble where it cannot even penetrate the area. And so that's something we would have to talk to the manufacturer about, and even production with the FAA.
And going back to the SWAT drone as well, there is a SWAT drone that actually does penetrate windows. So the officers don't even have to get close to a house to be able to break one of the, maybe, and the SWAT, the drone will do that. Um, we'll see. You know, other, only other thing that I did have in here, and it's, um, was vehicles, capital, uh, vehicles. Uh, I know last year, I think there was a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars that was, uh, budgeted for that. January one, when that money became available, we did order two Dodge Durangos from the Key Chrysler. In April, we were given a phone call saying they will not be coming in. So that money was never spent. We were able to find a vendor up in Vanmore, Ohio, that has a one Dodge Durango. Were able to re-appropriate to that back in the line item, uh, get the same POs we have from vendor, we ordered one. Uh, what we do like about this vendor, uh, is currently what we were going, we were purchasing the vehicle from one vendor. We were ordering equipment and sending it down to Mobile Combat Out of Cincinnati, the second vendor, put all the lights, all, everything that you see on the cruiser. And then we sent it to Danville up in Dayton for the graphics package. And for some reason, we have the most expensive graphic package anywhere, they don't know why. Uh, they say because of all the wording and everything that's in there. The only colors that are available, and unfortunately, the city of Wilmington has been blue or a little white gray since I've been there, since tiny two. Unfortunately, that color's not going to be available anymore. We have to go with white or black. So we have made a decision to go with black. With that being said, our current graphics package will not look aesthetic on the black. So we are actually in the process, and I provided, uh, Brian with a simple graphics package, I still think it looks very professional. Um, and we will have it available if you, if you general want to look at it later, um, to put that on. So that vendor does everything. We, we order a car, they put everything on it, from the lights to the radars to everything that's up there, and then put the graphics package on. They deliver it to us, hand the key over. If anything goes wrong with that car, other than oil changes and tires, they come get it, or they have a regional person come pick it up and take care of it.
You're gonna call for it.
I'm gonna kiss you for that, thank you.
So I'm looking at purchasing, uh, two police vehicles, whether Dodge Durangos or, uh, the Ford SUVs, depending on what's available. And the other, the rest of the money is gonna be, I want to earmark for one SWAT vehicle. Because currently, we don't have anything to get those SWAT guys around. We did have an old, um, ambulance that was outfitted and paid, that was it. To get eight to twelve guys in the back of an old SWAT like that, can't do it. Um, most recently, we were using the old fire department pickup. They were filling all the SWAT equipment in a bed of it, going to the SWAT scenes. That's not safe for our guys with all that, I mean, we've got thousands and thousands of dollars of equipment back there. Uh, the last SWAT call that we had, they had to use their personal vehicles to respond because the pickup truck wouldn't start. So I'm looking at earmarking between fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars for that third vehicle, and capital, uh, capital motor vehicles for the SWAT. And I'm looking at almost like a Nissan conversion van that would fit. We had cabinets in there and would fit between eight to twelve officer. Any questions?
I just wondered if the, uh, contract negotiations can lead to a, what, over a percent or so, should we upgrade more?
We absolutely can, yes. So I just put a basic two percent off.
It won't help our negotiations.
We won't.
We'd rather not discuss, uh, how much they'll.
Yeah. You can put one, you can put in, it's still not gonna make any difference.
I want to make difference for them. How much appropriate? Start there.
Anything else, Joe?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, five twenty. Page fourteen, correct inversion in front of you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The fire department, we operate five twenty, five twenty-five, five thirty, and five thirty-five. So you'll see about three pages coming to the fire department. Basically, the five twenty is the fireside, anything we do, fire trucks related, comes out of that. Five thirty is EMS side. Anything we do comes out of that. The five thirty-five is a levy that was for vehicle replacements. A vehicle replacement levy, so that's what we're trying to focus on with that money. Overall, that ask budget is down from the previous year. Uh, old line by line, uh, obviously wages, whatnot, that's per contract. Increase there, increases everything else. The utility line is up a little bit, just because we do operate three buildings out of that, the fire station, the station out on Ronback Avenue, and the building beside where my office is, six, uh, fifty, eighty surgery, all come out of that line. So it's up just a little bit for that. Stayed in five twenty, uh, five two seven one facility maintenance is up. Move that up so that we can hopefully replace all the windows in the fire station downtown. We have in the last year or two, replaced the bay doors, replaced the front and back walk-in doors, and now it's time for the windows. Let's see, rotten ground and such. Pretty simple there. Uniforms went up a little bit simply because the cost of our bunker gear that we buy is going up a little bit. For a brand-new set of turnout gear, bunker coat, helmet, pants, boots, gloves, hood, we're running about sixty-five hundred to seven thousand dollars for a set of that. So, that gets us there. Capital equipment, under five twenty, went to zero because they're moving to request, I mean, I can always request, maybe if y'all provide yourself, but. The, there is some money currently still there. Andrew made a note that sixty-five thousand will be in Conover for an in-stock pickup in twenty twenty-two. Chris Riley went and bought a new truck for their, uh, department. Was talking to the guy, I told him I was interested, he said, I actually got a couple of red ones being delivered next week. Only one of them's claimed, if you want to double it. So I just agreed to buy that a couple days ago for fifty-two oh twenty-five. So then I need to add in the light, chief, Rick, uh, Bethan was talking about the lighting package, the graphics, so on and so forth. That's gonna bring that up just a little bit. But then next year, there'll be no ask out of capital, but there.
You got, you got really lucky on that truck, because they're like a year out to get them, so.
Yeah, there's, there's other departments living up here right now, but I would gladly have taken that truck, that labor. I just happened to talk to Chris at the right time. Getting into five thirty, vehicle fuel is up. Basically, it looks like vehicle fuel went from fourteen thousand to forty-two thousand. But we started at fourteen thousand, we ran out of that pretty quick. Used twenty-five thousand off the fireside. Deleted out the fireside for next year, and moved it back to the, uh, side and just made one chunk account. That's why it looks like there's a huge decrease there. So we did fourteen and twenty-five, and then that works up. So we have to do that for next year. Medical supplies, incidentals at the top of page sixteen. Let's, we buy everything that we have of that, from drugs to medical things, ambulance, and so on and so forth. We're also hoping to look for a new EMS software vendor next year. If we see a way where it could cost up to fifteen thousand dollars to do a switch over for that vendor, we're, we're, we don't want to do too much until PD, we get the CAD system all working out, so that we're all, you know, dispatches be able to put notes in, they have popped in our reports. So it's kind of just the game, we're all kind of playing together with. And then in the five thirty, but, or five thirty-five fund, basically, everything there, we're just gonna leave to roll over. If you need to replace our tanker truck, it is a two thousand and one tanker truck, three thousand gallon truck. I've gotten a couple quotes, anywhere from about three hundred and forty-eight thousand, nothing like that, million dollars for a truck. The purpose of the five thirty-five would be to let it roll for a couple of years and build itself up to where we can have a half million, we can buy a truck. We've not done that in the past, hopefully, we can start doing that. We just paid off the last ambulance we bought, uh, so we're just gonna basically let that roll. I know it shows that we're coming to two hundred and forty, just so that everybody knows, the money tied up is basically all we're gonna have. Just to let it roll, you know, maybe we find a demo next year that is per se a little cheaper than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we go with something like that, but we're on the lookout for that. So, I will, any, any questions? Given staff? No.
How many more would you like, Matt?
We have two open full-time spots right now. We are very close to hiring one of them, uh, and still looking to build a second one. There has been some talk, I've talked to Brian and the mayor about, uh, some additional positions, possibly an assistant chief position, something to help me a little more on the administrative side. And give us another body. I don't think, you know, when I leave town, Brian's in charge and I don't think he likes to spend that. He doesn't look as good in his gear as the rest of the team, so.
Well, one of our concerns is what Brian and I are calling second now. You know, you're going to prove somehow to Andy, but it does.
What's his next yet?
Who's, who's next in line, and right now, I don't know anybody. We, we, we really, we are going to get that correct.
So that will be an addition. If it's somewhere down next year, or.
It's on the company's.
No, it's not.
No, it's not, so it's a note on the salary line, but it's not, you know, budget. It's something that we put in there to discuss for.
But you have your two people.
Yes, those two, okay. Yeah, they'll bring us up to three, six niches, and the, so there's nineteen of us there, when we're full.
Because we want to try to get a fuller staff group.
Oh, that's fine, I just.
No, it's a good question.
I see a, a third of the ship when I come to college and I'm checking all our problems out, so, yeah. No questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Randy.
Jermaine's not here, is he? Okay, so we'll just skip right over Parks and Recreation. Their budget is approved by their board, and they are not, they do not have an ask from the general fund.
Well, they.
Yeah.
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 There's no ask in this budget.
It's not in the budget, it's not in the budget.
From the general fund. Okay.
But you know, something's coming.
I think there's an ask, it's not included in this budget. So, and there's no one here to.
Elaborate.
Ask, to ask, so.
Ask for the ask.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so you want it in the budget, it should probably be here in ask order.
Cemetery is.
I, I can do that. I'm sorry. Cemetery, so, uh, increase in the salary line, that's, that's, um, doing parts of the new position.
Eighteen.
Seventeen.
I'm sorry, yeah, page seventeen.
And it's five eighty is our fund.
Five eighty, fund.
Sorry.
The increase in the salary line is due to the new position I created, you know, the superintendent. Um, the next, really, everything else is pretty much the same as you go down, uh, with the exception, if you turn to the next page, you will find a, um, big increase on the capital improvements. We, we really want to get really in on this call during. And I know that's a huge ask for the sixty thousand dollar increase, but we believe that it'll generate revenue to offset the expense. We believe that we can resell niches longer, and we've started that, we've started exploring that possibility of, you know, what kind of design, and where is it gonna be and all of that stuff, but, um, our best estimate right now is that we would need about sixty thousand to, to get that up and running. So that's, that's the big, that's the big increase, you'll see, everything else is pretty much the same as last year. So you see there's a design fee at the very bottom of ten thousand, and the column area itself, sixty thousand is our best estimate right now.
Is the cop area modular? We could, I remember when we first talked about this idea six or eight years ago, it was two or three hundred thousand dollars, so. So we're starting, we're.
Direct word, get modular.
Yeah, that is exactly right, yeah, yeah. And I, I want to, I really, I want to start somewhere, and what we can afford is what we want are two different things, so. And we really need to offer this service, I believe.
A cemetery with a chill coffee that I go to, lift up five different volume of cop areas. And I guess if they buy them, if they need them, yeah. And it's sure easier to build a swap of them, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
Yeah.
And we could start, as soon as council approves it, we could start selling the SWAT joint away.
How many, uh, I, I guess spots is the insensitive word, I don't know if it's a better.
I think they're called niches.
How many niches do we anticipate for, in this module?
Do you remember how many? There were three different options.
I mean, I'm gonna do the math on, you know, how much we charge per, and how many there are, and.
Yeah, yeah.
I can get all that for you, but yeah, there were three different options and different, yeah.
I cannot, I don't want to guess because I have so many numbers in my head right now. Five hundred and seventy-six. And there is going to be a capital need for a truck.
Did I miss that?
Um, well.
I don't think we got there yet.
We, we were down to consultant services, I didn't know if you were gonna back that up. Right now, it's zero.
We, we backed out the truck.
We backed out the truck, but, um, they don't have great vehicles.
No, they, they're, yeah.
They almost all hand me down, they're like in the burden, they were, they were shot. Like, hey, what about a larger truck, don't drive a ball? Well, we got driver, and they, make it drive a ball. I'll give you a bro for these, but they just got it around the.
Yeah, it's, it's a little, it's a little rough on the vehicle stuff, so.
The other thing that I will update you all during the regular council session is our particular coverage. Um, but I, that, you, you're not seeing that in there right now, there's a reason for that. So I will, I'll talk about that during the regular council.
Stay tuned.
Yeah.
Stay tuned.
It's not, not good news. So any questions about the cemetery? It's not in the budget, no. What's that?
Fees.
We are looking at fees. We are looking at inflation, we're looking at fees. Um, that's something, uh, per, the higher vice code, it doesn't need council's approval, but I will certainly bring that to you and let you know, so you don't want to side by it. We are looking at fees and expect, expect an increase in the near future, um, in the fees. And we're also exploring with the levy being passed, um, other communities who have a levy, you know, Wilmington is paying, they are supporting the levy. So a lot of cemeteries in that situation like ours, there is an inside fee rate for, um, purchase rate, and there's an outside of the city limits, uh, non-resident rate, and we are strongly considering implementing that as well. That non-residents will pay a higher rate than, um, city waste residents. And that's, that's typical.
One thing I noticed when I walked through there recently was, uh, how many slots we sold and there's still, for people who are still alive. That's, uh, I, I know that from a revenue standpoint, you own a truck, I, I mean, it's great if there's a lot, I know wrong, but. It's a, I was just looking through, you know, seeing a couple who, one and, uh, there were people hip on children and grandchildren spots and like, that's harder for us to operate a, you know, a cemetery there where you have these spots that have taken no revenue associated with our, yeah, who knows when they're purchased, but, or for what price, but. I think, uh, as much as we can do is, is, we should examine what the fees look like and be competitive, but if we're going to continue to operate this cemetery, we gotta, gotta do right.
That's right. Yeah, absolutely.
Alright. Next, we're going into the six oh five funds, which will be water, and that's Mr. Schaefer. Starts at the bottom of eighteen, goes on nineteen, goes on twenty.
So, um, I, uh, um, what is that? I tried, well, sorry. The good news that we'll have in the regular meeting, none of that is in this budget and, and I'll give you a warning to do it. Well, you, you see the contract, but, but, um, um. Right, so this is a very conservative budget based on current revenue, current rates in place. And, um, I wanted to, a little troubling, I wanted to, um, share is that through September, revenue is almost as badly what it was compared to last year despite the fact that we did the pipe set reading fees. So the fact that real, real current revenue is down really made me keep this as a conservative budget. Only thing that you might have to because of chemical prices, you know, typical chemical price. Um, lab, laboratory supply, things that we can't treat the water without. But both Chris, Natalie and Adam are frustrated with this budget. Because the, you know, the distribution budget is the same even though pipe prices up twenty, thirty, forty percent. But, um, I, you know, I, um, wanted it to be a conservative budget. So, um, I'm not going to go line by line, I think, um, we're not really doing anything that we haven't already talked about. But something whatever you want to ask me about, I love to tell you about waters.
Is one of the reasons why revenue's flat from last year despite the increase, one of the major consumers is not using as much water as they did last year.
Exactly, that's, that's the biggest chunk, yeah. A lot is used, but this figure currently is, is, is about water.
Yeah, our largest consumer is not using nearly as much water as they did last year.
Do we anticipate seeing any before the end of next year, any of the Bay County stuff come online here?
Right, that sometime, I'm sorry.
Bay County.
Right.
Honda.
Any of that value? So there'll be, um, you'll see the kind that, bringing two up from David. That will come next year. We will decide what to do and then at that point, I'd rather use it for water lines. But if revenue is down, otherwise they'll be needing for operations, but we'll look at that. But then as far as other revenue from tech, Tommy, that won't come though, it's tied along water, so. It's a good two years away probably, three.
Are we done?
I have a mistake, Chris.
Well, then you just move on to your next one, which is.
Right.
Next card.
Right, so, um.
So now we are in six thirty-five.
No, wait, hold on, sorry.
I do, I do have a question on water.
Oh, sure.
The lease purchase agreements, what exactly is that?
Right, those doesn't mean that, that we, you know, in place, so now we're, we've had those over fifteen years. Okay, I'm waiting for it, um, I wish I would have noticed that before right now.
Oh, good.
But if you go at the bottom of page twenty-one, the Stormwater Rehab line, the, the second, third and fourth column to be done on tour rehab, we are not funding any silver, that's not a link for it. And page twenty-one, the bottom two lines, it, we, the, um, the free number that you see on the ticket last night three on the bottom line, the ticket last night should be a below to that line to be deleted. I wish I would have saw that before right now, but.
Okay, so that Stormwater Rehab needs to be over in, is it duplicated?
No, 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 no.
Just get.
That line, you know, left over from before, we had somebody totally.
Right.
And, um, it needs to leave it.
Okay.
Appropriation, you understand, or, or mine?
Right, so it's something that a bit should be the number for tour rehab. One fifty, eighty-four, one fifty.
Got it.
Somehow it'll stretch it up and down.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Um, so, wait, other than the match on the, um, on the grant, on the, on the, I mean, code match, you don't see any, um, plant project appropriation here. Um, and the roof that I've got that, that we refer to with Jerry, that roof will be redone as part of the wastewater project. Because instead of building a new administration, building four lakes water, we're not use the existing sewer in our building. We'll redo a portion of it for that purpose. And we'll save, I, I make a billion and a half dollars in that process. We often, we do the roof at the same time, so the roof's portion will be plus to a half a dollar for the whole thing. So that's what a two hundred and ten million dollars share, the rest of it will come from the project, from the sewer to the river. But, and I hope that goes, uh, for almost that sixty percent design on the wastewater plant. Uh, we will have that design right over, right, right over Thanksgiving. And then, um, we will have a new cost estimate right over Christmas, to be a great Christmas present. So, so then we can start seriously building the, what we're going to need to do, uh, with, um, rates and the loan and, and whatever, the whole package. Um, we have that number. Um, so. Right, yeah, that'll, but that'll make this too, like, something. Um, but it, we, don't worry around it, I mean. Obviously, the sewer revenue is based entirely on water meters, so again, the revenue, um, is flat despite an increase in range, so. Any questions on the sewer budget?
Um, can you? I think I'm on the right line, fifty-three forty-two uniforms?
Yeah.
Were appropriated in a hundred thousand dollars per uniform?
No, man.
Has everything shifted on yours?
Something shifted from my.
I see fifty-three forty-two, I see.
Oh, you're, you're on to me.
Wait, something? Oh, look, Andy, it's not just your budget.
I have that, I have that circle on mine, I was going to show you after.
Right, and then that.
You're talking stuff or something?
Yeah, you're on to Stormwater, and that's all the lines on Stormwater are set to one. It looks like.
I'm so sorry. Quiet, we're in a shop.
But that all, wow. Yeah, I would have, I.
Any other questions for Rick? Other than, was there a football game Monday night?
There was, that was the best game in a long time.
That's your favorite.
We went out there, that was a great time.
Point of order.
Go Brown.
Big ones, the big ones don't like brown stuff. Don't want to hurt this one.
So there's, yeah, there's about six lines that just shift down.
Yep, yep, exactly, so it looks like, uh, from the nine thousand in property casualty insurance, um, should be vehicle fuel and then everything just used to. Yeah.
And so billing expenses going down by?
Billing expenses.
Oh, no, it's going up everywhere.
No, billing then put down, um.
Ten thousand.
Right, the, um, we've got a lot more efficient in there.
Is capital coming correct to two hundred?
No, that would be strong quarter three, I'd be still under several over three, oh.
That was just to see if everyone was still awake, you passed. Do you need a cookie?
I need a nap.
Okay. I'd even bring you a cookie if you need it.
So we'll get that fixed.
Yeah. It won't be like that next time.
Um, there's really no surprises though in the Stormwater.
So, uh, can we move on to the irrigation? The sanitation part?
Sure, let's do it. So I'll kind of run through, um, all of our lines, I have differences for ten point three versus ten point two, if you got a double question. Feel free to ask, there's some big numbers that'll be in. So first off, um, salary line went up a little bit. We were, we just recently got moved back. A few of that leftover year's date. Education training fees. So, I believe Brian looked up federal law now, that in order to issue CBL, you have to, uh, go through an actual class, you can't just self-train and go take your CBL anymore. It's about two thousand dollars a person through self-study.
Do all of our employees have to have it?
Yeah, class B CBL and the rest. Next is facility maintenance. We need a new roof on our Weller stop, street from, from the Loom. That was, uh, we got an estimate from the conference, so that, so it's, it's more thirty thousand and then. Um, next up is dumpster maintenance, um, it went up six thousand dollars. Jerry, our, our welder, the next part dumpster's got about half the material that he normally does for about fourteen thousand this year, price is given, so. Collecting vehicle gas expense, both of our fuel lines went up almost fifty percent. I had to give a supplemental for collecting vehicle gas expense, I think, in August or September for almost forty-five thousand dollars, take almost forty-five thousand and then, further down the line, you'll see an increase in, um, in landfill vehicle gas expense as well. I did a thirty thousand dollar supplemental for that one. Higher than batteries. We're not going, coffee light, we provide a lot of fees.
The difference between buying diesel or buying gasoline?
Yeah, I mean, we have, so we run three trucks every day between a real trash truck, our automated trash truck and our automated recycling truck. And all three of them fill up every other day. It's a lot, and then our, for our all food, our all food fuel for our equipment back in the line, so we have a two thousand gallon tank, and it gets filled about once a month. Tools and installing, shopping supplies, um, I put six thousand more in it for a laptop and a software to, uh, to diagnose codes on any of our heavy equipment and trash trucks. Any of the newer trucks and equipment, they throw engine, a light, a warning light, and you have to diagnose to figure out what's wrong with it. Right now, we're using, you know, an outside company, but every time they come and scan a truck or piece of equipment, it's two hundred and fifty dollars for the same. We can diagnose that stuff on our own. Turning the page to the back page, um, industrial engineering went up a little bit, that's just our, our general engineering for, for Terracotta, it's the company we use, we are engineers, they're the ones that build. The theme expansion engineering, so in May of next year, we're going to be getting instruction on phase eight. That, that two hundred and thousand is any minute before that phase. Which we've already started. Um, state local fees, so we have to pay, um, the CBA, that's kind of all it's been. One of the. I do pay solid wage fees. I put fifty thousand more in, but I did a transfer, I believe, last month into that line. Some more wage you can bring in, more of a guarantee, essentially. Lease purchase, um, I put the same amount of money in there, um, looking at replacing a, about ten year old truck, dump truck, small dump truck that we use to go around and pick up, um, yard waste and bulk out every day. I think the oil gas expense, I talked about that already. Um, the container line is, um, money that we use to every year, at the beginning of the year, we buy more of the black trash hangers that everyone has because so many of them get damaged or lost throughout the year. The cost of those was a lot higher in twenty twenty-two, so I had to put some more money in the line so we can get some more of those things. Landfill monitoring, that is, uh, we use a company called Predominus that does all of our, um, water sampling for the landfill. Landfill monitoring, that is, uh, we use a company called Predominus that does all of our, um, water sampling for the landfill. That was a bunch, a bunch of number that they provided to us for the year. And then you see the big one. Mary Kay, if I talk a little bit more about that, two million dollars for failure construction.
This is our, we've talked about it, we looked at, we looked at some of the analyzing our revenue stream where we're about a year. We keep getting ahead. You know, we, each phase, we got a little further ahead and a little further ahead. The, the, the theory was that the, the fees would build up, build up, build up, build up, a little bit like we're doing with the sewer, the wastewater treatment, and then we would have some cash behind that. We are ahead of ourselves. My best analysis is that we can do this. It's gonna be really tight. Um, and that we get down to the end of the year and if the carryover balance is not gonna be two million dollars, it might be half a million dollars. But then it starts to build back up again because you're having this one time with this million and, um. Our best, our best analysis right now is that we can make this happen. So, um, that's, that's what we're gonna go with today. The only other thing I wanna, um, elaborate on the truck that you would like to get. Have the line that says lease purchase, that lease slash purchase means lease with the ultimate purchasing. And it doesn't mean we will buy a truck ever from that line. That would only be a leasing line. If we buy a truck, we may move that money down under a capital line because we won't ever purchase, flat out purchase a truck under that, and that, it's a little bit of a misnomer. It meant a lease to own, not lease to purchase, or lease, lease purchase agreements are paid to that meaning. You lease it and then at the end of the lease, for a buck, you own it. Um, to purchase, actually flat out purchase a truck, it'll come out of the capital line and we'll, we can move that around when that time comes. If we don't lease it and we find we can purchase it, we'll, we'll adjust those lines, but I just wanna say it's out. We're not going to buy a truck out of that line. That is truly a lease line. It's a bit of a confusion.
Yeah, we have two other pieces of equipment that we pay out, uh, pay a payment on out of that line.
Right, right.
A question for you. Why, why does the transfer bond retirement go up?
Transfer bond retirement, well, because, well, interest. The, in, in this campaign, twenty twenty-two, we only paid maybe one percent interest. The new notes are now two point six. So it's the interest payment that went up. It's still four hundred thousand dollars, but the interest came to fly out.
Thank you, sir.
I want to hit them in the head about the state. To talk about insurance. Yeah. Can I hit you while you're still here, while you're still in this state? I still pile on early quickly. While you, while you, while you're focused in. So we've had this discussion about the insurance fund. And this is a little, Brad is here to help me with this because this is Baileywick. This is H R is in charge of, um, in charge of the health insurance. And that's what we're gonna talk about. I'm gonna stand in front just because I'm tired sitting. And so that I, and so I can see your pretty faces. What I handed to you is a flow chart so that you'll start to kind of reacquaint yourself with what our self-insurance is. This is our health insurance. We've been doing this for more than twenty years and it's been extremely successful. We've hit just a little bump in this calendar year that we discussed briefly previously. But when you look at this, you can see that we take the employee's portion, it fills out their paycheck. We take the ninety percent of that out of each department's salaries, that's the benefit insurance. And it goes into the insurance fund as you go down these steps. And so then from that, we play, pay the medical claims and leaves us with a balance in that insurance fund. Which statutorily, we have an actuarial that is done every year. And we must keep X number of dollars in there. We must have a, you know, a floating balance in there. So I wanted you to see what the balances have been for the last few years. Two thousand and nineteen, it was six hundred and sixteen thousand, and two twenty, it was eight hundred and forty-three. That's what you want. It's just like an insurance company. The premiums go in, they're sitting there waiting for the claims, waiting Bob Osborne for the million dollar baby. You're waiting for those, for those big things to happen. That's how insurance companies make money. That's how self-insurance works. Exactly the same way, and we've been able to do it. Well, twenty twenty-one, all of a sudden, it went down to three seventy-four. We were still, we were still compliant, but then now, all of a sudden, we're down to one ninety-seven. What the heck happened? Well, if you look at the very next section, contractual services were paid out of that insurance fund. Those contractual services are things like, I can't even tell you what they are. But you can see in two thousand and nineteen, our contractual services were thirty-eight thousand. You can absorb that. It, it's, it's okay. Your self-insurance, you've got the balance in there, you can absorb that. In twenty twenty, it was forty-eight thousand. That's okay. You can still absorb that. In twenty twenty-one, a hundred and eighty-one thousand? Oh, my gosh. What? And then currently, I'm projecting out, you know, two twenty-five for this year. These are things where we're paying, can I use Marathon Health as an example? I don't know what that number is.
Ten thousand a month.
How much?
Um, ten thousand a month for testing and prescriptions.
So we, we made a payment to Marathon Health, which is out of the airpark, and then our employees are allowed to use that. And the theory is that if they use that and they get their prescriptions free and they don't go to their doctor, that it's, it's cheaper by the long run. We're doing an analysis to see if there really is an R O I there. Um, we're not absolutely sure. Um, over the last two years, we've had other people sitting in Brad's seat, not Brad, who either maybe didn't know, didn't want to, didn't, I don't know, I'll throw them all under the bus while we're standing here, just going to. And they farmed everything up. They farmed out all kinds of things that can be done in-house and have been done before. I mean, forty-eight thousand dollars one year and a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars the next year. There's a disconnect there.
When did we hire Greg? A year.
We'll go back a lot of years.
Yeah, just checking.
So, so what we found is what's happened is that, that four, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean, around that, of those big numbers there, of the contractual services, are coming out of the pocket that claims are supposed to be paid from. And then in March, we had half of a million dollar baby. We had a big half a million dollar claim. We should be able to absorb that. Our self-insurance program works. It should have absorbed it. But we've got two hundred and forty, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contractual services, approximately, that should not have come out of there. So, our council tonight, I'm gonna ask for a transfer from the general fund where these contractual services should have been paid from because they were, those employees, that department saying, I can't do this. It had nothing to do with the, I mean, it has to do with the insurance, but it's not figuring the premium part of it. The premium is to pay the claims. Those contractual services were something that were decided upon arbitrarily and on the side to be used. Can't go back and undo that. Can't go back and undo that. But we are not compliant with the amount of money we're supposed to have as our actuarial says we need to do. You saw under Brad's, uh, budget, that he had a hundred and fifty thousand dollars under contractual services line. That's what we said we were gonna circle back around. That's, these contractual services are now going to be paid, as they should, under his budget in the general fund. But I need to right the ship for the insurance fund and have reimbursed the insurance fund for where these should have come from. Uh, I hate that. I really, really do. I hate that it has come to that. And once again, I wanna reinforce that we have been extremely fortunate. Our employees are really good about managing their healthcare. And we've been really, really successful with being self-insured for as long as we have. And it has worked and it can work and it, there's no reason why it can't continue, but I need to fix that. So I wanted to come around and kind of reacquaint you with how the insurance works. You saw in the budget, I don't know what page it was, um, those numbers start with two thirty-one and two thirty-three. They're back in, after page ten. Thank you very much. We have put a number of three point four million dollars in those two. To go deep into the weeds on that, what we do is the two thirty-one fund is this insurance fund we're talking about right here. That's where all the money comes in from the employees and from us, and it goes into that fund. We had to create a second one that's called the U M R fund. That's because we opened up a checking account at the bank. And that's where U M R can come in and grab those claims. So they, every week say, I need fifty thousand dollars. We have fifty thousand dollars in claims and this is what it is. We take it from our pocket in the insurance and we put it in that zero sum account that's called U M R. Because they, we don't let U M R be able to grab our operating account. We'll only let them get a checking account that's always gonna be zero. They ask for fifty, they're gonna draw fifty. That's it. Done. So that's why it looks duplicated, um, on in the budget. It looks like the insurance is done twice at three point four million. It is not really. It's just where we're taking a pat of one and into the other for the accounting purposes and to protect ourselves and protect our checking account with that. Did I go too deep on that?
There are a couple of things I would add.
Thank you so much.
I'm just here to look at it. She knows all the information. I've been doing, um, this kind of stuff since seventy-eight, yeah, believe it or not. And, um, the system we have here as far as self-insured arrangement is, is perfect for what we do. Here we are. The initial review of cost benefit on somebody like what we're paying Marathon, Marathon Health is a separate entity. Right now, we're saving money. And we want people to go to Marathon Health because that keeps them, that keeps U M R from, instead of asking for fifty-five thousand dollars one month, maybe they're only asking fifty because the money is going to Marathon instead. So when you all did that, that's a good setup. We can track it. Every single month, we need to track and that stuff very closely. And we're also trying to do things to increase the health level of our staff. And right now, as far as cost, if I had to be pushed to say, what would it cost next year? And I, I, I appreciate an April first renewal. Because if you're a December thirty-first or January first renewal, life is terrible. It, it's just, you don't get your best deal. April first is good. But then that screws the supplement as far as projecting out for, for expenses for the coming year. But we, knock on wood, you shouldn't say it, but we, we do look pretty good. Having a hit like we did is gonna happen. But that's the reason we have, remember, we have stop loss coverage. We have aggregate and we have specific. And the checks came back. But as Mary Kay's pointed out to me, we still have to pay it out. Then when you get money back, if those claims go above certain amounts. So it's working the way it should. We just need to really track and see where the dollar's going. I, I, I'm not willing to admit that that hasn't been done in the past and it's gonna be done now. Because we do, we wanna see, because if I can save a bunch of money over here, I might be able to use that for an employee recognition program to increase retention over here. So more to come, but Mary Kay hit it on the dimes. It's working the way it should, but every, my history's been that every three years, you're gonna catch one in the teeth as far as big claims. What they got, they only happen three years in our company. Well, Marathon Health, uh, when we first signed up, you know, we had to have a certain number of employees that signed up. But we reached that. Yeah, and, and we've, we've actually eliminated now. There is no minimum. You, but we want people to go because I can see the difference in prescription costs and visit costs. We still have a lot of employees who are using an urgent care center as their primary care physician. And that is the most expensive place to go, other than an E R. So we've gotta get people retrained. It will.
Coach them after, after we see that they use the, the emergency.
I'm sorry?
Do we coach them?
Coach is a good word. That shows his personality. But no, we, we do our best and then we're showing also, you spent this, if you'd gone here, you would have spent this. And we got people to understand, the airpark is not twenty-six miles away. It, it's up this way and turn right. And that, that's what we gotta do. I actually figured out that if I pay fifty-six cents a mile, you get a perk for mileage, you get them to go there, we can still save money. Don't sit, don't spread that around. But that's, that's what we need to do.
Brett, what is the specific, you know, if there's a five hundred thousand dollar claim?
It's pretty low. I think it's ninety. I think it's ninety.
Ninety.
Yeah, this, and this claim was accumulated over a period of time. And the checks coming in over a period of time. It's ninety, I think, and our aggregate is a hundred and twenty-five percent, I think. We expect to pay claims for coming here. So we have that in suspenders.
So to rack, to rack that up, I do have that big ask, um, on, on the supplementals tonight. Um, to, to write the check with the insurance because we do need to put those dollars back in, in, in this claim fund. And, um, and. Are you gonna do the, the transfers and stuff?
That's on our agenda.
If we wanna discuss those, we can in the session. I put them on the agendas so that, since they were so large, so that we can do that.
But it's already over open, right, or, or when? Uh, it's, it's on our agenda if you wanna discuss.
See, if you wanna jump in and do it right now while we're talking about, we can go back and finish the budget. Are we done? I know you're gonna have to. While we have admin bullshit.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, did I jump over that?
You did. That's here.
Oh, go ahead.
What?
What do you wanna do, Amy?
Yeah.
Let's do the supplementals.
Okay.
Other events is there?
You're right here. Yeah. Let me, um, sure. There you go, right here.
We have them, y'all have to have someone that was prepared for it. Explanation. So, um, on your supplementals, and this is one that I, that's why I wanted to, to circle into this because we have the big one, either B is the, is the insurance transfer that I'm asking for that we just discussed. But either A is a transfer from the general fund to increase the line for the transfer into the taxi fund, the cash. This ask brings us up closer to what the next year's ask is as far as a transfer between the general fund. Once again, as we talked about, the budget we've had, it's not a very good budget and that transfer line was terribly low. So the, we need the extra two hundred thousand dollars cash for cash flow. It doesn't change her appropriations until we get to the transfer. But this just gives us the availability to move the cash from the general fund in to cover her current budget in the taxi. Then contractual, these are, these are the contractual services, the infamous contractual services we just talked about. That we're still, we're gonna pay these out through the end of the year. We didn't create any line in the general fund. We didn't create a new line in the general fund today, it's in the new budget. But this helps Brad fill up, fulfill the rest of those contracts for the rest of this calendar year. And then item D, the jump hanger, we all know the jump hanger. We have the contract that we had with them. It's, if there are not, there are funds that come in from the real estate taxes to cover our costs and what we're obligated by statute to go to Wilmington City Schools and the Joint Vocational School, we need to transfer from the general fund. And we needed more than what we estimated in the current budget. And so this finishes that out for this year. So it's, that one is the gift that keeps on giving.
Every year.
Love it, love it, hate it. Any other questions about something else?
No.
So the transfers. The first one, okay. The first one is in the, this is the right, item A.
That'd be a lot more money, right? Or if we're just at the?
It's one, so.
Is it supplies?
One ten, one fifty, fifty-two, sixty-nine, and one ten, one fifty, twenty-three.
One fifty. There's three middle numbers, one fifty are court, court budgets. So they've obviously asked for money to be moved from their other services line into their supply line. Did you guys have any money to do that?
I think that they were running low.
They were running low.
So are those, is that second number correct?
The second number is not correct.
That's correct.
It's one ten, one fifty, five three two one. Those middle numbers when you're doing those transfers, there's no, in there, they're going the same. Then capital improvements under the cemetery from capital service to facility maintenance.
That's for, we are doing a hazardous waste disposal program with all of our departments. Sam Miller in our offices has been coordinating. We dumped this on her. She has been doing a great job of coordinating and getting an inventory of everything that needs to be thrown out and throwing it out legally by the EPA rules. So this is one of those. So you'll see a lot of these coming in in this meeting and the next meeting where people will be doing transfers or supplemental in order to get their hazardous waste taken care of. And this is Kirby's.
Cemetery?
Cemetery, not Kirby's.
Item C, Rick, do you want to speak?
Right, so hybrid sun head is impossible to find. Chris, um, from a project that went to funk. And I was getting a magnitude of one below this price. So I'm going to grab a load here and, and then we provide it next year, otherwise. So just moving ahead to set the line and to take it down to the real building.
And you didn't need all the money that's in that batch line?
Right, right, right. You're using lots of money from off to the water stuff.
So this is another, the next one is a circle around thing. We talked about the OPT two project. So in the OPT two project with transit, they would have spent that money and then the money would have come to, from the state and funded that line item. This is why I'm going to use that. I want to transfer those dollars up into the driver's salary so we can finish out the year. And the two hundred thousand dollars that we're taking out of the general fund is instead of what's coming from the state, and that all will happen in next year, the OPT two will. But it just, it's a, it's a, it's a switch out to make that happen. And then the formation officer salaries are running short for some reason. And this is where we can make a transfer. And this is where the monies are, where we can have transfer. And I made that decision. So I've been tied in next year, either anybody else, I just took care of that for that.
I will mention that on this sheet, you have two extra supplemental appropriations at the bottom. They're from Rick.
ENF or just not?
ENF, they were last minute. They made it here, but I forgot to do it on here. So depending, I might go and add them before we start the next meeting.
Just let me know when we can.
Or not.
Rid them in the.
Yeah. But right now, those two items are not in your supplemental.
Just not, or we can tell them what we're doing.
Yeah. So if I don't get it done, then we'll just put them on next week, right? Next time.
So are there any questions from councilwoman? It should be extremely expedient, the finance section, the regular. Councilwoman Kay not, right? To my knowledge, because it's in other locations.
Any questions? Hey, I thank you for indulging us in going through some of the deep weed stuff.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you.
So we have one other area that we're supposed to go?
Well, we haven't really talked about.
I can go through it real quick.
General admin.
Yeah, we can go through the administrative stuff. I'll go through it real quick. And on the first page, administrative salaries, you noticed that it went from six sixty-five down to five eighty-one. That's incurred due to HR, salaries being removed from the administrative line. And it's now placed in its separate line, plus eliminating the city administrator position. So that's why you see a decrease in that line.
Ryan, who are departmental coordinators?
What's that?
Who are departmental coordinators and what do they do?
Will you see that?
That's in the explanation.
In the explanation. So the building and zoning coordinator or at the safety service coordinator.
Oh, yeah, so that's code enforcement, building and zoning, the act net assistants, janitor, all of those positions come out of that salary line.
But who's the departmental coordinator?
So that would be Sam, safety service coordinator?
Oh, okay.
Sam?
There's safety service coordinator, there's building and zoning official slash coordinator, there's code enforcement official. I call those coordinators also.
Yeah.
Official.
You know?
It sounds nice.
It sounds nice, doesn't it?
It does sound nice.
Engineering, we put in a hundred and fifty. We have a lot of projects going on. As you can see, last year, we put in a hundred and we've spent all of that. A hundred and fifty, as we put in the notes, that may be a little low, but that's what we're going to try to limit right now. Again, this is a living document, but a hundred and fifty is what we put in. We didn't have anything as far as inspection services and we have really made a point, made a point that we are going to inspect projects, private development, construction, infrastructure projects, and just general project oversight. So we had put in a hundred and twenty-five thousand for that next year with all the projects going on. Everything else is pretty much the same as last year. On that page, when you move to page two. Yeah, that's our legal. That's whenever we need legal advice, outside legal counsel, we use that line paper. Any personnel issues that come up and stuff, that's generally the one that we use. Create a general legal.
And then tax, corporate licensing.
That's our IT support.
For the whole, for the whole building.
And more generally for the city.
Lot more.
It is a lot more.
Especially for level service.
It's what keeps us afloat too, though. If we don't have it, it shuts down. So like, we have to have it.
We can also take certain software programs out of that. It's more than just.
Yeah, all of our Microsoft, all of our computer stuff, all of that comes out of that line. You'll notice there's an increase for regional planning. That's to update our city's comprehensive plan and to update the subdivision regulations that we, I think nineteen ninety, when was the last time they were updated? And they're going to, we're going to partner with regional planning to get that accomplished next year. Facility maintenance is just aging building. It just, it seems that with prices going up, we budgeted a hundred and fifty last year and ended up being two-ten. We go up a hundred and seventy-five for next year. Yeah, it's just an aging building that requires a lot of maintenance. We put in, this is the number that's always near and dear to my heart, but we put in two hundred thousand for street paving for next year. I don't know if it will be zero. I don't know if we'll have, that's really the line where we have to just wait and see where we are. We can, we can adjust that now, we can adjust it later. We just, we just put a number in there. Personally, I'd like to see more paving, but that's, that's the number that we're comfortable with right now, putting that into the budget.
Well, we don't really want to appropriate that line required of the.
That's, and we have not in the past, because then they know how much you appropriate, but it's there. That's a number that we can, we can play with if you want, but that's what we decided. And then the rest is pretty much the same as last year.
Why did we not fund Main Street?
Main Street, where are you?
H two.
H two, one ten, one twenty, fifty-two, seventy.
That would be up to council if they want the, but the budget does not have that in there. That would be, council would want to put that in there, that would be up to council. But you're right, that was twenty-five thousand last year and there's nothing in the budget for that this year.
I would like to see it in there. We've been doing it for the last ten years. I wouldn't say we're.
I can curve. Other mothers.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to skip over that, but yeah, that is a different change from last year.
Are we still trying to pay them biannually? That's, no?
No, we pay them when they're up some.
Okay. Yeah, I would support you back in spot.
Can you remind me, what's up with Sugar Tree revitalization project?
That was a, there was a conceptual design on, it's going to be, it's going to be a huge project someday to upgrade and the infrastructure of Sugar Tree. And right now, we just simply, we don't have the money to do the project right now. So it's kind of, and that's why you see the note that says this project's currently in hold. We would really like to do that someday, but it's just the money's not there right now.
We're talking over a million dollars.
Yeah.
That's part of just the car.
So even the fifty thousand.
Spring Street is dusted for a day. Hello, I'm having a fun to do all day throughout. I'm about to just cut. I've been, you know, it's always balancing up where we, well, that's a much longer than it is for me. Is the IT consultant not tech advisors?
So.
It's, sorry, it's fifty-three, three-six.
What, five?
Five, three, three, six. Consultant line for IT.
Yeah, so I, I looked at that and it seemed like what it's been used for in the past are like smaller specialty projects when we just need to hire IT. It's not necessarily tech advisors, but we hire someone to do something that has to do with a tech upgrade or something like that, so.
I had one, I thought this was going to go to this line, but, and again, I'm not sure if Eric can question that, but what's the status of our build out on this room? We have to do an AV system here. I remember when we last talked about it, it was, and that's, I asked her that question because I thought that might be in this, this project might be in that line. But if I remember right, that was care money or some sort of federal money.
Right.
But I, I don't feel like anything's moved forward. And last I heard, we were waiting on semiconductors or chips or something. So I don't, I feel like we have a box in the back that I don't know what it does.
So the box in the back? So that is a sound system, an amplification system. The microphones, a few of them were not working. They said we need to switch these out for warranty or something. And so they took them. And they need to, I don't think they've been returned. I actually haven't opened up the box. So we were just talking about this, weren't we, John?
But when they're returned, that completes this project?
That would only complete being able to hear everyone. In terms of upgrading the AV system, which is a whole nother level. And they're just, we would have to find someone to help us figure out how to do that. And maybe the IT consultant line would be a place to start. We need help figuring that out.
Okay.
Like we need to hire someone who knows more than.
Well, I just, I felt like that project's been going on for a couple of years now and I don't, I don't, to my knowledge, it hasn't concluded. I remember asking Mary Kay, is like, do we still have open orders with them? Have we paid them or we?
Oh, maybe there's something that was started that I have no idea about too. I wasn't aware of.
So no, I think everything's taken care of, it's just, whatever we spent that money on doesn't appear to be doing anything for us, so. It was just a general question. And I thought maybe that money was high on.
I did have an interesting call constituent the other day. Happens to be a council junkie who watches them on TV and said, can't you do something about those microphones? We just can't hear.
Right.
If somebody stands next to that one, it's fine. Maybe the presentation, you know, to council.
Right.
Can't hear it.
Like, this is sitting here, can we like take a screwdriver and take it out? Like, I'll do that for nothing. If I'm allowed to, then there'll be a hole in the table, but then, but they're just sitting there, they're taking up space and then there's this thing.
He's saying it's about two hundred and seventy dollars at least.
So are we done?
No, we're having it.
No, I just, like I said, I wanted to ask because I feel like that's a bill of health project. I don't have anything else to add. So you're done? Anybody have anything else for the special meeting? No. If not, then I would have some remotion to adjourn.
I have a question, sorry.
Yes, sir.
From personnel, personal question. I don't know if that's an executive session question about expansion of like code enforcement. Is that an executive session question or is that a question for now? Like, what does that number mean for people that work for the city? Is that an appropriate question now or is that something I should ask the executive session or is that someone else?
If you're asking, do we budget to increase staff? That is not in the budget. To increase staff, if that's what you're, if that's your question.
That's my question and my fault.
It's not in the budget.
Why not? Is that just a cut we need to, because I thought that was a, you know, key thing of me. Many people thought it was important, Councilman Kay, I asked.
Yeah, I was trying to, yeah, it's not in the budget and it goes back to what Mary said, it's this balance. Then, you know, you've got to find money somewhere. Yeah, it is not in the budget for additional persons.
Do you know how much that extra person would be?
I'm sorry?
Do we know how much that extra person would be?
Admin assistance nowadays is around fifty thousand dollars. And that's without benefits. I'm just saying, yeah, with benefits, you probably.
So find seventy-five in the budget?
Seventy-five thousand.
I mean, I'll take this home, but we're all part of this.
That's, that's the answer, so.
I'll find this buddy. You'll need mustard, rot work or whatever.
Anything else? Could we adjourn? We're adjourned. See you in fifteen minutes.